Folks, we're back. This is Steve Sansom. Michael McDonald with Veterans in Politics. We had some technical difficulty. Chelsea, she's so hot, she just burned up the entire wifi system and we had to change it to a different one. But before Chelsea Fisher, Knight County School Board trustee is our guest, but before we get to Ms. Fisher. Mike, you have any rant?
Uh, speaking of hot, we have Hawaii burning down right now and we were just talking to Chelsea about the historic districts and some of Maui and Lahaina burning down to the ground. And it's like how it's so moist out there, you know, and I know how hot it is here in Vegas and just, I couldn't imagine just the hurricane winds picking up the fire and coming out. But I'm so glad that Chelsea, you're here. Maybe we'll get a good insight on what our school board is doing out there in Knight County. And I know out here in Las Vegas, it's very crazy and my aunt was on there and it was, there's so many changes that need to be, that need to happen and our children's education is very important. So thank you for being on the show today.
Yeah, before we get to Ms. Fisher, this program was brought to you by Ron Quince, who's a congressional candidate for district number one and Stephanie Phillips, who's a candidate for United States Senate. Ms. Fisher, thank you for coming on the program.
Thanks for having me.
Tell us about you.
Oh, tell you about me?
Everything. Don't leave anything out.
Oh, you better get a cot then. Um, I'm originally born and raised in Portland and we moved to Nevada during 2020. We'd actually been trying to move for about a year or two before that. We just wanted somewhere warmer, but also less politics to raise our kids in.
Can you pick this state?
Boy, Knight County is probably not as bad as Clark County.
Yeah, so we just kind of wanted to be left alone and everyone said, well, why do you want to live in Knight County? That's all retired people. I said, that's the point. I don't want to live around people my age. I just, you know, my generation, we didn't pick up a lot of the, a lot of the values that, you know, our grandparents and parents had. And it's really sad and I want to keep that for my kids.
Well, you are trustee in the school board?
Yes. So for legal purposes, I am speaking today as an individual and I am not speaking as a representative for our board or our school district. So I want to clarify that.
I, I get, I get that. Well, tell us about what you've learned since you've been there. I mean, you've been there how long now?
Since January.
January. What, what you've learned since you've been there? What, what inspired you to run for trustee?
Well, like I said, you know, we chose Knight County because we wanted to get away from people in general and just be left alone and live our lives. Bill Karns from our Republican Party, you know, Bill, I don't know if you know Bill, um, that's who really pushed me to run. I
Bill was a good guy.
Yeah, I didn't want to put myself out there, but my dad told me, well, you don't get to complain unless you're willing to do the job.
Right.
So I said, yep, I guess you're right. Here we go.
And since you've been there, what, what have you learned? What, 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 what gets your goat? You know, what, what really pisses you off?
I've really learned a lot, but the biggest problem I think personally is we have a lot of good people with good intentions that run for office. But what I've seen across our state for the school boards is first of all, we had one law firm who I won't name, but they were representing most of our school districts. What I saw personally, um, I don't feel that they were representing the school board members how they should have been. And instead, what I've noticed is happening in my opinion is that they are really silencing, indoctrinating and manipulating our elected officials into giving the superintendents all of the power. And they just show up and vote. Sometimes I don't think that they even understand what their actual elected official capacity authority is. So it's been interesting to see what's going on and how things are being ran. And I'm hopeful that, you know, across the state, I can help other school boards and really get things back to the communities. Because what we're seeing is the school boards are, um, the states really running them. It's not your elected community members and that's how it should be because that's why they, that's why we have school boards. And a lot of other people get critical because they'll say, well, you haven't worked in education. You haven't done this. That's not why school boards were invented. They were created so that we hire the people to raise our, to educate our children. It's supposed to be in our community because we'll know what's best for our community. That's why you have to be elected in. So instead, we are, we have been letting the states run our school boards. So unless we change it, I don't really even see the purpose of having a school board.
So sorry, do you think that the, um, the school board trustees give so much power to the superintendent? Because the individual trustees don't want to do the work. They didn't, they don't want to do the research. They don't want to do the interview, you know, the things that's supposed to, you know, open up their minds before they make a vote and do a decision. You think they just pawn it all off on the superintendent so they don't have to do any work, basically?
They essentially, like I said, they get indoctrinated into board governance and policies and they give away all their powers through policy. So essentially they all give away their power through the policies to the superintendent and the administrators. And they still vote on things, but I've had conversations with some of our CCSD trustees that are on the board. And, um, we've definitely disagreed on how things are done and it's just, I don't know how to explain it. They think it should be a certain way, but they don't understand that they are the authority. And the attorneys allow it and people step in and so it's not going to get fixed until they really read the laws themselves and challenge them. Which is what we did in Knight County.
How differ is, is Knight County from Clark County?
Polar opposite.
Explain.
Well, like I said, we have, um, we are now hiring for a new superintendent. The previous one we had, um, I don't want to say too much, but he just was not a good fit for our community. And so we gracefully let him go and now we are hiring for a new superintendent.
You don't have one of those contracts when you let them go, but you got to pay them five years from now?
Okay, so this is the other problem. So the same, the same legal firm that was representing us, Douglas County and a few other ones, um, they negotiated our superintendent and Douglas County superintendent early in December, before it was even time to negotiate. So that was pretty obvious that that was done because people were not happy with the superintendents. And they knew that new trustees were coming on, uh, going to take office in January. So that, in my opinion, was not in the best interest of school districts because you just renewed contracts. Knowing that likely the new trustees were not going to support the current superintendent, which then puts a school district at risk for litigation and having to pay out contracts. So
There's a lot of litigation that goes between the school district and the, um, you know, all the lawsuits that are paid out. I couldn't believe that when I did some research into that, little Clark County anyways, but I don't know how it is in Knight County. But the litigation gets insane and how much money is, is out in the honoring of different contracts that they have negotiated, right? Like for, like, do you have, you have a CC, let's see in, uh,
It's almost like, um, most government entities and the school districts or other places where tax dollars go end up being cash cows for these places. And that was the other issue I had with our attorneys.
The attorneys are making so much and then they have what, four principals that are making a hu- over a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand? Even in Knight, they're doing that too?
I mean, I think that's after benefits is over a hundred thousand, but I think they still are bringing in like ninety thousand just for our principals.
And then the teachers are making a lot less and the money that was allocated to, towards education doesn't go to the actual students. It just goes and gets pocketed by the, the people that are higher up, which is, is there any accountability on the board and?
That's exactly what the board is supposed to do is provide that transparency and accountability. And I'm sorry, but if my superintendent asked for Peloton in their, in their contract?
A Peloton with the hundred dollar monthly subscription?
You think that the public's tax dollars should pay for your Peloton?
He's stressed.
Come on.
They're stressed. Come on.
I don't care.
They're stressed out.
Does he have a golden toilet seat?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know. Uh, I don't know him that well.
Well, if the superintendent thinks he's stressed, what about the teacher in the classroom that's overcrowded?
That's what I mean. And, you know, I hate to bring up CCSD, but the prime example is they've already settled their administrators contracts. They made their administrators happy, but where are their teachers at? They haven't settled with them.
And they're the ones that are actually on the front lines, teaching the kids.
So that's my biggest problem. And so when I ran for school board, I saw that that's how things were working and that's not right. Kids come first, students come first, then teachers, then we can talk about everybody else. And, um, earlier when I first, I think it was like our third meeting, our second meeting this year. I think I was the only trustee to vote no on giving our admin a retention bonus. But
It's very top heavy, right?
Yeah. Well, and in addition to that, living in Knight County, um, the cost of living is much cheaper. And we are last in our state. So, and I'm pretty sure I said this on record in our meeting. I said, we are last in the state. So I don't, I don't know why people think that they should get a retention bonus or any bonus when we are the bottom of the state and almost the bottom of the nation, if I'm not correct?
And don't you think, shouldn't, uh, people be paid based on performance too? If you're, if you're getting your top percentiles or, and we're ranked what, one of the last in the nation, like, like in education for Nevada, the state of Nevada. So like, don't you think that, that they should be getting raises if they, they perform and help to educate the children more or the funds are allocated properly? So there isn't that, that accountability. I mean, what kind of power do you have as a trustee? What can you do?
The board, I don't have any as an individual, but as a board, that's where you have those arguments. And the board has full purview of the budget. So they could, they could, they could, um, vote and implement, um, freezes on those things. They could vote against them. They don't have to approve any of that. And ours, I'm assuming most of them are the same. We have like pay scales.
Do they just rubber stamping or they, these, the people on the board actually?
Essentially, yeah. So it all gets brought and like, if you look at the larger like, um, Washoe and Clark County, theirs are, a lot of it's under consent agenda. So they just approve all of it and it's not, there's not even like discussions for it.
So no debates or anything to just, oh, we're just going to put this for a vote and?
Yeah, they've basically been told by their attorneys, like, this is how it works. And they come in, vote yes on whatever, and then blame everybody else for the problems.
So what happens if you go against that grain or you start, you ask, you open that to debate? Do they, are you ostracized? Like what, what do they do in that circumstance?
Not in our county, thankfully. Um, we retained our local TA for legal counsel and so ours is back to our community. So we have a great board right now. Um, we did have three board members this year resign. So it's been, um, personal reasons, I guess, but they also
That's what everybody says.
They also supported our previous superintendent. And so I think that had something to do with it. I personally wanted them to stay because you don't want a completely one-sided school board. That's not healthy either. Yes. Um, so the third one just resigned this last Monday. So now we'll have to go through and appoint somebody in that position too. But when you get elected in, you should really take that with everything and to resign, to resign, I mean, you're basically slapping the face of all your constituents who put you in office, but
How many schools do you have?
Oh, let's see, yeah. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I believe we have eleven, twelve.
How many students?
I just asked for enrollment numbers as of this year because I think it's went up significantly, but it was just shy last year, I believe of like five thousand.
Five thousand kids total?
But we're growing a lot.
And that's pretty small.
It sounds like it, but it's grown.
Did they hit all their, their recruitment numbers and everything for this? Cause didn't the school just start like a couple of weeks ago or a week ago?
We just started last Tuesday.
Yeah, last Tuesday.
So
You guys got a teacher shortage over there or no?
We do. Tonopah is probably our hardest because it's so rural. There's no hospital there. Their track and field really needs to be redone. So we've had some arguments about that because some people feel like people don't want to live out there because there's no hospital. And I said, well, even if you have a hospital, people look at the schools when they move somewhere. So you can have a hospital, but if they don't like the schools and there's not even sports or if there is sports, it's not comparable. They're likely not going to want to move there. The most challenging to staff has been our special ed department. And I think that's not only statewide, that's been on a national level because we've had a lot of people just leave their professions since the pandemic. And it's taken a toll on everybody. Um, I was told desert radiology just had like forty people that left. And so it's taking weeks, sometimes I guess, to get, um, things read.
So recently in Clark, um, they just had this one, um, teacher, female teacher that's been going out with a student. How do you guys handle that over in Knight County?
Since I have been on the school board, uh, to my knowledge, that has not occurred yet, but, um, yet, I shouldn't say yet. I should say that has not happened. It will not happen.
That you know.
I would love to say that it would not happen, but you know, I can't say that because I seriously think that our, especially sexual abuse rates, but our child abuse rates are way higher than they've ever been. And that's my honest opinion and I'm willing to bet that statistics would back it up. And I would say the likely leading cause of that is my generation. I'm almost, I'll be thirty-four this month. My generation younger were not getting married, single parents, um, and with the cost of everything. You have both parents working even in, uh, can't think of the word, uh, home, even with both parents. So we aren't even raising our own children anymore. We're leaving them with babies. Yeah. And for family and statistically for child abuse, it is, I think seventy-something percent. It's somebody that they know.
That's, uh, well, we have a two, two, our, our current society is encouraged for both mother and father to go to work and to produce and to, to bolster our, our economy, but, but we don't realize like it has a toll on our children. Who's raising your kids? You know, you have, you have daycares raising, and now they're, they're even pushing back daycare to where it's even younger and younger and you have, you have to go, you know, both parents are working. And then you, the person that spends the most time with your kids is usually your teachers, right? So the teacher has become pretty much a surrogate, uh, parent, right? And where, where do those numbers fall in? And another thing I always wonder is, do they ever do mental evals on teachers? Do they ever teach, like, like when you're, you're getting your licensure? I don't even think they, they have that process and you have these teachers that are getting in there because they're so hurt, they're hurting for staff and for people that will take that job. And they get these teachers in here that are completely crazy or treating your children bad and you would never know, you know?
That's a good question, but I would assume that it's probably, um, against the law to require that.
To require a mental eval, right? Yeah. Well, don't you think a police or teacher or something should have an evaluation before they?
Police do.
A job that's with your children?
Teachers? Yeah, I do think they should, but to an extent, because you know, there's a lot of mental health conditions that, um, could put them in a box where they're, maybe they need some help, but not, doesn't make them dangerous, if that makes sense. And that stigma alone, I think, is what creates more problems. Because then people with a stigma won't go get help when they know they need it.
Well, they have an EAP program, I think, right? Like, uh, it's like an employer assistance program.
Most places have that, especially government. Um, but that doesn't mean they'll go because like I said, with that stigma. And we're seeing that with police. A lot of police, um, in twenty twenty, I don't know what the statistics are, but I heard there is a lot committing suicide.
Very high suicide rate.
Because of all of the bad stigma that they're getting. Um, so that was really disheartening. But also like a police officer, if they go in and get diagnosed PTSD or something, um, they can't be in their profession anymore.
Well, same thing with teachers. You never know. Like, I mean, I know teachers get stressed out and they have a lot of papers and just problem children and students and things. But, but they, to get that help that they need too, you know, you know, they do have like, aren't, aren't they mandated to have one school psychologist or something like that that they go?
Yeah. So we have school counselors and, um, uh, psychologists, but those are also hard to fill. Those cost a lot of money. Those costs basically what we pay our admin. But even offering, um, bonuses and relocation bonuses, like we're still having a hard time filling those. And now with the pandemic, a lot of them don't want to come in person. They want to do virtual. But you, you can't come in and assess our sped kids virtually. That has to be something done in person and some of the therapy and just the things that they need, like that has to be in person.
And aren't they realizing that more and more kids are having mental illness because they don't have that, that, the parents in the household or our society or, you know, they've been on screens?
I think the biggest thing that's missing is consistency. And you know, any psychiatrist will tell you that, um, early childhood development psychology classes, children need consistency. So that's why when two parents get divorced and that child has two houses, they act up way more because you're taking one child where they have all these rules in this house and now you're taking them over here. And that's almost the same thing that we're seeing in schools.
Or they get alienated from a mother or father. I mean, that's one of the root causes of why we have so much anxiety, depression, self-esteem issues, mental illness, criminal history, drug use, sex trafficking, all because of the breakdown. And we have what? Fifty percent divorce rates and the parents, both parents should be active in their children's education and taking care of, making sure they're okay. But we have such a prevalence of, of, you know, separation of, of family or alienation from between mother or father. And then these children are going to school and carrying all that weight of mother, my mom and dad hate each other or whatever it is, you know? It's, it's, uh, it's a big issue. What, what studies I've heard, you know, I mean, it's
There's a lot, a lot, but we are putting a lot of adult problems on our children, you know? Probably more so before I was, before I was born, but like probably my parents' generation. You didn't have parents putting all their business out there in front of the kids.
On Facebook, on social media as well.
And they stayed, they stayed married even if they hated each other because it was what was best for the kids. And I don't recommend that. Because if it is unhealthy and it's in front of the kids, then you're teaching them that that is normal. So then when they get older, that's what they look for subconsciously in a relationship. Psychology is really like, um, I've studied a lot of psychology. So it's really fascinating, but it's also fascinating how much the government has unfunded. And I do believe it's a hundred percent intentional. They completely, um, keep doing budget cuts to mental health because it doesn't benefit them. They have no benefit from it. And it's wild that they think it's more humane to leave these people with schizophrenia homeless where they're getting beat up because people can't tell the difference and they think they're on drugs when they look similar unless you've really had that experience. So these people think that it's more humane to leave them with infections, not able to care for themselves. It's like seven hundred dollars a month for social security. So they can't even afford to live on their own. But that's more humane than, you know, forcing a medication that helps them be functional or at least keeping them safe somewhere. I, I strongly disagree.
And that's why there's so many homeless people on the streets too. It, it's lacking from our schools, you know? It's, it's, uh, you know, we're supposed to teach a child how to, to be an active member of society and get a job or, you know, to learn how to be self-sufficient. Yeah, our society is, is, uh, is very laxing in that, right? And we have all these people living on the streets. Like you see, drive past, uh, you see tent cities everywhere. I don't know about Knight County though. Knight County is
We have a small homeless population, but there's not a lot of resources out there. So um, you know, homeless people are going to go where the resources is. That's why you have Portland that's so bad now. And they will tell you, they'll say, well, now they can use drugs on the street legally. There's no repercussions. I mean, you can see the videos on Twitter and stuff. There, you can't even take your kids in downtown Portland now because they're just smoking fentanyl right in the open everywhere. I mean, Portland's so bad that Walmart closed their stores in Portland. You didn't hear about that? The Portland that I grew up in is not there anymore. I don't recognize it when I, we left our whole family in Oregon. And when I go back to visit, it's, I'm ready to leave as soon as I get there because it's just
What do you think it is? Just the, the crazy laws and political climate?
Yeah, a hundred percent. And I don't understand it. And a lot of these people who are running, a lot of these places aren't even native Oregonians.
What, California?
But it's even more confusing because, you know, one of the schools I went to was Da Vinci Middle School and it was an arts magnet middle school. And it was amazing. I got a really good education there. They ran it, you know, it's a magnet school. So we got to do art. We got to do, um, you know, ceramics, dance, textiles, uh, photography. Like they had so many options for kids and all of my teachers were amazing and they were liberal. But I don't know, like, what happened between that timeframe and now? Those are, these are not like the liberals that I know because they're the ones that taught me how corrupt our government was and taught me about communism and socialism and the differences and how it never works because it always turns, socialism never works because it always turns to communism. So now I'm like looking at everything that's going on and I, I, I can't grasp it. Like I don't understand.
And it's becoming, that's what, what our society is becoming because of the the changes in law or the, the, or the agenda that's pushed upon. Even in kid, the children, I mean, have you noticed that too? Like in our education, I don't know about in Knight County, but they're indoctrinated with that, you know, at a younger age, like all the
That was a big reason why I wanted to leave Oregon because Kate Brown, before she left office, they passed a bill that every school, even in the rurals, would have to teach the gender ideology and and sex ed starting in kindergarten. And if you didn't, you lose your public funding.
Yeah.
Um, so that was concerning and I even contacted some of the Catholic schools. Catholic, you would think would be safe, you know, if you're religious and you don't want your kids exposed to certain things. The, the priest who was the principal at this Catholic school in Portland, um, told me on the phone that he has to question how progressive he needs to be. I, I couldn't believe it. I said, well, if you're allowing this in your Catholic school, why would I want to pay five hundred and fifty dollars a month per child? When they're going to learn the same thing at, in public school? I don't understand.
I, do they have EAPs up there in, uh, in Knight County too? Like the, um, educational savings for, for, uh, for education, like you can choose what school you want to go to and private schools?
We don't have private schools. We have one and it's CCA, the, um, Christian Academy, but that's the only other school out there. There's, there's some great people who want to get a charter school going and a private school going, but we're not quite there yet.
So Montessori schools or there's only one private school up there?
I mean, um, it's mostly been like a retirement community overall. So there hasn't been a lot of options for kids, even for events or like things to do. We really only have like the bowling alley and an arcade.
And, and have you been pushing, well, since you've been on the board to get more programming for, like you had when as a child, you know? Cause that rotting, being a child's experience in different, you know, arts and, um, activities is probably one thing to keep them off the streets or to heat them, to educate them through experience, you know, experiences.
So one thing that I've been working on doing is finding people who have hobbies that are ones that are versatile enough that where we can offer like an after-school program where no, just even people in the community, if they have a good skill and they can make it, say, for example, cake decorating. Say you're a cake decorator. You can bring in cookies and all the tips for decorating and you have like, say a six-week course. It's a small fee for materials and most of the people in the community will donate if the family doesn't have money for it. You just do an, an after-school class and you're teaching kids small things. You could even do something for woodworking. You could do martial arts. We have a martial arts academy out there, but it is packed. And so
I was so happy to take home ec when I was, I think it was middle school and I learned how to better, like I was very happy to have that class and the financial literacy, like they, they should be teaching more of that instead of just, you know, getting in credit cards to actually manage a budget and how to, to, uh, do investments, you know what I mean? That would be awesome to teach children, but they've gotten rid of a lot of programming and
In civics?
Yeah.
Civics is really falling behind and now it's like they don't even want you to talk about it. Um, but then you're supposed to know how to vote. And one of the biggest things I learned, I always called us a democracy because that's what I was always taught and what it was called. But we're a constitutional republic. So I'm like, wow. So I've had to really like un-indoctrinate myself in things that I've learned throughout my life. And, um, it's been eye-opening. I think people always ask me like, what was the thing that really changed you? And I think it was probably during the pandemic. I mean, I've already seen a lot of corruption in our government and hospitals and healthcare. To open my mind enough to see things for what they are. And when we first moved here, um, we went to Florida for like a month in twenty twenty. And the news in Portland was almost the whole hour was COVID and the Antifa riots. I'm not going to call it BLM because it was Antifa. They hijacked BLM in Portland. Then when I went to Florida, it was like the COVID numbers, maybe five minutes about the protests and then the rest was like normal news. So seeing the differences and how the So seeing the differences and how the media is affecting us, it was eye-opening. Cause people always ask me, why is Portland so bad? I don't, I don't know. But then I realized that was why.
Well, you can learn, use those lessons you learn there to make sure that doesn't happen.
That's exactly what I've done and that was one of the reasons why I ran for school board because if I'm not, if I'm not safe. And left alone like I wanna be in Nye County, where where else am I gonna move to? Where else is there to go? And then the longer you move, you're gonna run out of options, so. Everybody just really needs to stand up and put in the work to change our country because they have really overran over the years and. My generation especially, we never ho- held people accountable because the country's running fine, you just go and mind your own business and then. You wonder how we ended up here. Well, this is why, because we didn't pay attention.
And all these laws that got passed without anybody, any thought or any any debate or any any uh. Uh, you know, thought thought process put into it and then they realize like, oh, wow, the we have so many laws that no man can follow this law, you know. Nobody can follow these laws and they make everything a crime. I don't know if you ever read Atlas Shrugged, but our society is moving towards that, which is really sad, it's. She talks about, Anne Rand talks about like objectivism and how the government oversteps their bounds and creates this power, they can make everything illegal. And if they want something shut down, they'll come after you, reuse the judicial system, which our judicial system is completely despotic right now. Look what they're doing to Trump and other. You know, a lot of other people, they'll come after you and put charges on you and that was our own president, you know, it looks makes our whole country look bad. Yeah, it makes our whole country look bad, you know, to to um. You know, it we don't get that under wraps and have too much government. That's what I believe that we have right now.
It's definitely too much government and I think that's a problem with our teachers is. We don't have bad teachers. What we have is bad government that's tying in the hands of our teachers. Or we have administrators who, some of them are great, but other ones I say, I like to say um. This is a a term that I invented and coined. Um, when I left the medical field, I call it lettered name dysfunction. The more letters they have, the smarter they think they are. And while that's true for some of them, there's the other ones that just have no common sense. Like they might be book smart and they might be able to tell you like what A, B and C are. But not how you get from A to B to C to D. And you'll find that in the medical field and when I started realizing that with a lot of my doctors, I became way more careful of. Who I chose as a doctor because a lot of them, like I said, they know what things are, but they can't connect your symptoms to what's actually wrong with you.
Yeah, and and these teachers are the ones that are 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 tasked with molding those young minds and shaping them and. Where they 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 first, light bulbs start appearing in their heads, they start to give them that thought, you know, when you have them, give them challenging. Projects or or thought-provoking uh items to talk about, you know, in in our society. Where you will only be taught this, you know, and that's that's something that that it doesn't open up minds, it doesn't make people think, you know, in our day and age, we don't. We don't think, we just get into drifting, you know, I mean, we drift into something and and we don't ever give thought to. Why is our society this way or why is it, you know, why haven't I learned this in school or so, that's good at least.
So much has also been taken out of schools and now I think that's the biggest problem with like my generation and younger is. You have all these kids who are told to go to college and basically you're taught if you don't go to college that you're stupid.
And rack up a hundred thousand dollars in debt for a polka degree or something.
So we have a lot of kids who graduate high school, but because they. Are maybe better in something else or their brain is wired differently, they didn't go to college, so nobody else helped. Hone in on what they were actually good at and what their talents are. Maybe it's a baker, maybe it's a photography. A photographer, maybe it's an artist, maybe it's. A welder, maybe it's all of these other things that you don't need to go get a degree for, but we've taken trades out of schools. We've taken music out of most schools. It's, we don't even have a music teacher in all of our schools.
Or no.
What kind of assessments?
Like personality assessments, uh um skills-based assessment, stuff like that.
They do, they do for the GATE program, which is um the same thing as TAG, if you're familiar with TAG. Um, so it's a tal- talented and gifted, but it's called GATE now, so it's a gifted and talented. I don't know what the E stands for, education, I guess, um. But that's still not enough because the GATE program that we have in Nye County, in my opinion, isn't a true GATE program because the kids. Like my daughter, she scored a hundred and thirty-seven out of a hundred and forty on her GATE testing, so she's. Top one percent in the country of kids that ti- took that test and. You have to also compare it with academics, so she also scored high on that end and I. I kind of already knew that she was smart because she knew her whole alphabet before she was two. She's left-handed, completely artistic, I. Even if I took a class, I couldn't do the things that she does. Um, but the GATE program is not really. Ca- it doesn't cater to kids like that, that have that hands-on learning and that um. Mentality and ours is basically like an enrichment, which is like extra math and. Reading and those things and I think they've gotten better because we have some better um people leading it. But those things really need to have like more hands-on, more science, music, art, all of those things that help those kids.
Well, just like there's different teaching methods, right? Like that, like there's a, you know, Kenziology, uh like a person that works with their hands and and is taught that way. There's a visual learner, auditory or, you know, like there there's different teaching or or learning methods that I don't know if the.
Yeah, the different learning styles, I forget the term for it. I wanted to say mnemonics, um. But yeah, everybody has their different learning style and most of the. Methods that teachers are forced to use to teach are, don't cater to all the kids.
Hand out, you hand your worksheet, here, finish your worksheet.
Our our administrators and our principals, I should be clear that principals are not the same as administrators. They're technically an administrator, but I like to keep mine separate, because I like my principals, um. That most of ours have gotten them off the Chromebook, but in a lot of the schools, they're giving them Chromebooks or they're giving them worksheets and they're not really. Doing much else and then the kids don't even have a creative outlet, so like if you were a rural county. Where you can't get an art teacher, a music teacher, um they have technology and PE. And steam, which is science, but even in those ones, we're so underfunded that we don't have. The money and resources to get a lot of materials that those teachers wanna do with our kids.
So what happens with the budget out there? Do you guys, do you guys debate it? Do you guys actually allocate certain funds to to different areas or or? Um, you know, is it just established from the last board and then you guys don't, you guys?
You have an annual budget that you go over every year and it gets really complicated because there's different funds. And so the money that comes in goes in different funds and through those funds, it can only go towards certain things. Um, the general fund. Pays for the salaries. Um, and some other things and then you have like your infrastructure and I'm probably saying the term wrong for the fund. But then there's one for like the infrastructure and like maintenance stuff. Yeah, so we have different funds for everything and it's really complicated, actually. I sat with our um finance chief operating officer for. Four hours and even that wasn't enough time to really get a handle on like what I was voting for, where the money is going. Um, and that that in itself is more than a full-time job, but.
And new funds that come in, do you guys allocate those ju- just in those different buckets or do you actually allocate it to new programs or?
Well, your finance director and your finance team basically tell you where it needs to go, but it's up to the board to ask the questions and review it. And oftentimes you'll see because like in Nye County, it's only four hundred dollars a month. In Clark County, I think it's like twelve hundred a month. For what you get a month is you get people who want the title and maybe they have good intentions in the beginning. But they don't wanna spend that extra time to go meet and really get all the questions answered. And then they don't wanna do it in a meeting because they don't wanna dry it out and so they end up just voting yes on everything.
And that's how we. Yeah, that's how we get to where we're at.
So Ms. Fisher, there there was uh three um pieces of legislation that um highlighted Carson City over the years. And they all begin with Cs. Uh, the first one is critical race theory. The other one is Common Core and then there's Campus Carry. How do you feel about? Those piece of legislation? What what's your opinions on them?
Critical race theory I'll start with, so I strongly agree with teaching our history and teaching about slavery. Um, I don't wanna speak for the black community because I've learned not to do that. Um, you should never speak for other communities, but in my opinion, um. You know, I have Native American heritage and my own family relinquished. Relinguished being Native American so they could be American, so they whitewashed. Yeah, they gave up their passport, so I I guess that somehow gave up my DNA, um, but.
Got free college.
We have more than two percent, but that's a, that's another story. It depend, no, it depends on the tribe. It depends on the tribe, so some of my family was under the Freedman rules and. The Choctaw did not recognize that yet and I was even in Durant, Oklahoma and nobody could tell me why. That why those numbers didn't count as the same and I think it's because of interracial mixing because. When the government came in and was making all of them register, some of them that didn't were pushed down to Lubbock, Texas, which is where my grandpa was raised. And I think I guess there was a lot of interracial mixing, so I'm not sure if that's why they don't recognize the Freedman rules from the Dawes or. If there's another reason, nobody could answer it, but I'm assuming it's likely because of interracial mixing.
So you wanna pay for free college for?
Well, but in their defense, you have to preserve the whole bloods that are left because, you know, full Native Americans are almost extinct. Um, so back to, sorry, back to what you were saying, um, it's important to teach our history, the good and the bad because. If you're not learning it, it gets covered up. And it's dangerous to not know your history.
Like the JFK assassination.
And so. I personally think that people maybe were tired of it not being taught. And so the pendulum swung too far with the CRT because. Um, a lot of my black friends, first of all, most of them will be pissed if you call them African-American. They'll say I'm not from Africa. Um, so it's just a preference that you have to know your, know your audience and know your friends, but um. Some of my friends, they don't like CRT because.
Well, you know, they say everybody came from Africa.
Because they said that it dumbs them down even more because the government's saying, well. You're not adequate, you're not enough, so here, we're we're throwing you another breadcrumb. So so to some people, that's what I've heard. Um, I don't believe that we should be teaching our children that anybody is superior over anybody or. Any of the things that come along with CRT, but you absolutely should be teaching the history and the harm that were done to slaves.
Common Core?
Common Core. I really don't know how I feel about that, other than it's not working. And that's evident. Um, I don't know if maybe it's not being done properly, but. It doesn't make any sense to me. I tried to do some math that I saw and. The way that they do it was confusing to me, so I couldn't even help. Our kids with it. My husband was able to navigate it better than I was, but um some of the things that I've seen just don't even make sense.
Uh, Campus Carry.
Campus Carry. We actually, to my knowledge, had Campus Carry for our principals and I think that was recently. Um, rolled back by our previous superintendent. I personally, as long as our principals have taken courses and it's um regularly updated. I think our principals should be allowed to campus carry, but um I don't know how I feel about our teachers because. You're running a lot of risk for it getting a firearm being left somewhere or being grabbed by a student and that could. That could be a definite problem and a liability.
And dur- during COVID, um Clark County had about seventy thousand kids that they couldn't find because of couch surfing. And all of that. How do you guys um find your kids?
We partner with the sheriff out there and they have like the juvenile probation officers. Um, they go out and even our social workers and I think even our admin go to houses. They'll do how- house visits, um. But we do have a homeless population out in Nye also and we have a special fund set up for them that. I'm not sure who goes with them. I think the social worker where they can go and get Walmart, go to Walmart and they have money to buy things that those students need, but. Even out where we live, there's nowhere to put them. There's no housing, um and it's really sad, but. That goes back to where we are as a society and we are failing our kids, I mean. We have parents that are strung out on drugs and now with fentanyl, it's even worse. Um, they're not living at home if they've been abused, so they're running away and it is harder to account for those children. And you can't, I mean, you could throw them in jail, but what good is that gonna do? I think it all ties back down to mental health. Strongly.
Is there anything that we didn't discuss that you wanna bring up?
I don't know, I could probably talk for hours about education.
Mike, do you have anything else in this?
Just really, um. Letting the school boards take back the power to their own community because last legislation, we saw that they were trying to. Pass a law that would fine school districts five thousand dollars a day if we passed a policy. To limit transgender students in sports or the bathrooms. Yeah, so they were trying to pass a lot of bad bills behind our backs. Um, we had NASB, in my opinion, re- misrepresenting half of the rurals and. What I found is NASB has their own board. Um, so they have their meetings and then they go speak to the legislature on behalf of all school districts. So when I'm watching all of this, I don't even, I didn't even know, yeah, and that's great if you actually know what's going on. But I had no idea like how in-depth this was and that they go and speak to our legislature. My. Thoughts on NASB were that they helped provide us training and, you know, classes throughout the year and so. That was very eye-opening to see them speaking on things that I would like to think that almost all of our board members were against. And it's not a one-size-fits-all, so it was very disappointing to see things, not just NASB, but other places across the state. Um, trying to tie the hands of the rural communities.
Don't you think that that we should have more parental involvement, like the parents should be able to speak and to have. Suggestions and things that as a a represented member like, hey, I want my children to learn this or I I want. This is what's going on, can you guys rectify this situation? Like there should be more parental input and I know you guys have those board meetings where you you have public comment, right? Where the uh parents can come in and.
Maybe you don't know this, I was violently attacked at a Clark County school board meeting and it was on video and went viral by their school police during the pandemic. So I had some um, some parents and uh teachers there that asked me to come speak about vaccine injury. Um, cause I worked in the medical field and me and my kids are vaccine injured.
This is before you were trusted?
Yeah, before, this was in um September of twenty-one, yeah, twenty-one and. They closed off public comment and I've been into it with the AG over this also. So you're supposed to allow public comment before you vote on anything that's in open meeting law. Well, they used a loophole and had doctors who weren't even on the agenda to speak. Speak after public comment before they voted to mandate their um teachers for the vaccine, which was. Still only EUA at that time and I think still even today, which is emergency use only. Um, so when the doctors got up there, um Dr. Loff from Southern Nevada Health District didn't state his specialty. So nobody knew what kind of doctor he was. Was he a gynecologist? Surely you wouldn't want a gynecologist telling you a vaccine safe. And I think it was Lola Brooks, she asked him, um. If you've recently had COVID and you get the vaccine, will there be harm? And he left a blanket statement and said, no, there will not be. And that put the public's health at risk. It, he should get malpractice for that, which I, to my knowledge, hasn't happened. It just, the things that happened in that meeting were terrible, so I immediately stood up and. Questioned what his specialty was and his lie because. Even the VA, I talked to Doctor Da- I think his name's Doctor Dasley, he's the chief of infectious disease at the VA. The day that vaccines rolled out and that was one of the things he said to me and I even have it on video because I was recording. Um, that if you recently had COVID and you get the vaccine, you're at a way higher risk of adverse reactions. So to hear a doctor lie and put the public's health at risk and lie and commit perjury to the school board. Um, was very concerning and so, so then Linda Cavassos had the police. Get me out, but um the officer, and it's on video, he didn't identify himself from behind me, didn't even give me a chance to see who was behind me. Just yanked me from behind like a ragdoll, um, it was pretty intense. Yes, and then they tried to charge me with a crime for a misdemeanor for interrupting a public meeting. And they were even gonna try and take me to trial over it. Well, this was after public comment, but they had people disrupting the meeting the entire time and nobody else was handled that way. And it's on the video. So for whatever reason, I don't know, maybe he's got mommy issues or something. Uh, that officer just chose to manhandle me and then three of them. Slam me through a door and into a wall and TikTok even took the second video from their body cams down and said it was too violent. But they said that that was not, not excessive force.
Well, how do you feel that you were on one side of that fence and now you're on the other?
I have had a teacher who I, um, I don't even know her because I'm so new still. I don't know everybody still, um. I don't know everybody still. Um, she had personal attacks to me during public comment. I personally don't mind. Because I think that you should let people speak their mind and I don't wanna limit that, but. Sicking the school police on people like that is completely uncalled for. And that was also my second school board meeting I'd ever been to and. They told me that I was ignorant for not knowing that that was a law for interrupting a public meeting. I was like, well, I didn't realize this was ran like court. So yeah, I think that to bridge the way with parents, we have to get parents on the same page. And in a respectful manner with our teachers and we cannot have them in our classrooms undermining our teachers, which happens a lot. Um, I have been advocating for that in Nye County and I've seen it done effectively where. The teachers have a sched- like a, a parent volunteer sign up. So they know for one hour during that day that they need one or two parents to help volunteer. So a parent can come in for that one or two hours and then go home and I think that would be a great solution. Um, like I said, as long as the parents are respectful and we don't have a, any battles, but getting parents involved is a big thing, but. It's also a big thing when they're working and can't.
Um, dur- during your bio, did you mention your military service?
During my what? My bio? No, I did not.
Why'd you leave that out?
Well, I'm not a combat veteran, um, so. Yeah, but still, I mean, I'm ninety percent service connected, so.
You proud?
No. They turned me into a geriatric overnight, so. Oh, yes, I'm, yes and no because, you know, looking at it now and who we have in office and seeing. What's going on in our world now, I don't trust our government telling us what we're actually fighting for anymore. I don't trust that we're getting the truth. So I've ta- I've tried to talk people out of joining now because. I'm not putting my kids' blood on the line for these politicians. I'm not doing it.
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service.
Um, Mike, do you have anything else?
No, I think she, she went through pretty much uh, um, everything there. That's good that you do get parents involved and you will let, let the, the, those uh. Public comments go through and not stifle their voices or maybe have something online where they could do suggestions or comments, you know what I mean? Like, like have. Cause you never know, somebody might have a really good idea on how, or, or maybe be able to help their child or other children in the future, so. So we think that, you know, it sounds like you, you have more common sense than a normal uh person out there and you can have the experience. And you wanna be able to see your children raised in a, a good school district that actually. Is being how your, your kids are in the school district that you're also a me- a board member of, right?
Yes, and our, our schools, the kids still all, they can choose not to, but they still have time in the morning and they all say the pledge of allegiance. And that was taken out of schools in Portland when I was in grade school.
Or under God, right? They're attacking that, or they're trying to get that out of.
Our still say that, but they have the right to opt out and not, not stand for the pledge, but I'm glad that our kids in the morning are afforded that right.
Yeah. Well, well, we thank you for joining and for taking a stand and be able to, to voice your opinion and to, to. To check out the transparency and make sure that all the, the budgetary items are being allocated properly, because I know that's gotta be a. Herculean task of doing that and managing it, especially here at, at Nevada, so. Trying to get our, our numbers and our, our children educated is very important to, so, because the, the children are our future, so. We appreciate you going and, and taking a step to, to join, to be on that board and to be able to voice your opinions and, and uh make it a better place. So thank you.
Hoping that we get great people in office because if we do not hold Senate and Assembly. People accountable, um, my job. I might as well resign at this point if we don't have people in there that hold the line because they are the ones who pass the laws that we have to follow and if they pass some of the things that they've tried.
And hopefully they're not just saying voting yes and they actually look in and read the laws and, and realize what these, these bills that they pass are in. As statutes, the long lasting effect that it has on our community and our, our state, so, yeah.
Well, I for, I wanted to say one more thing, sorry. Um, one of the funniest things I saw and not haha funny, just like stupidity funny. Was a Democrat leader in another state, she said that. Most of these kids' parents, um. Shouldn't ha- don't know what's best for their children because they didn't go to college. But she doesn't, because they didn't want them to have the, the choice for school choice. And so they're sent, they're attacking parents saying that we don't know what's best for our kids. But the irony is that those parents went to public school, so. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, a lot of the trustees don't go to college.
Well, and a lot of the trustees, their kids are in charter or private schools, so I mean. To speak against public schools when you're on a school board is pretty bad and I wouldn't recommend it.
I remember we had one trustee that uh, um, had a GED and was a trustee.
That's fine. That doesn't mean she's bad.
No, not saying that at all.
Oh gosh, what was I gonna say? But, um. Yeah, I don't, I don't see how you could support public schools, but not have your kids in them and. I know someone will argue and say, well, why should my kids have to suffer? I am trying to help it, but I don't want my kids to go there. Well, thankfully I trust my teachers, um, so my kids are in our schools, but. I could homeschool. I have the capability to homeschool, but. If, if I don't. Put my neck out there in the fight, look how many kids are getting left behind whose parents don't have that option. Or for whatever reason, they, they don't have the capacity to get their kids out of public school. And our tax dollars are funding it, so everybody should wanna fight back and get what's best for our kids, so.
Well, Ms. Fisher, thank you for coming on the program. Mark is gonna zoom in on you and then you could say. Your, your final, um, whatever you wanna say and your point of contact if you wanna, if you wanna give it.
My point of contact? Is um, my email. Yeah, school board email. It's C Fisher, F I S C H E R at nyschools.org. Um, I don't know if I really have much final thoughts. I've pretty much said a lot and hold your elected officials accountable. Get involved, um, know who you're voting for truly and once you elect them in. Light the fire under them. Go up to Carson City. Go storm their door down. Um, but yeah, hold them accountable because. Not a lot of people do, so thank you guys for having me on.
Thank you for coming on. Thank you, Mike. Folks, that's uh Chelsea Fisher, Nye, Nye County School Board Trustee and Army Veteran. Believe it or not, because when you look at her, you probably think she's air force, but no, she's army.
I'll forgive you. I left the crams at home though.
This is Steve Sanson and Michael McDonald, veterans of politics. Until next time.